Okay, I call to order this regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission, Monday, June 12, 2023, and I invite you to stand as you are willing and able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I plead by allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Anishnaabik, whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that the three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black Creek, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands is an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care for which the Anishnaabik and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and our community. And instead of Clerk Falk, I'm going to ask Marianne Kornexel to take the role.
I will do that. Commissioner Ecke?
Present.
Commissioner Asman?
Here.
Commissioner Blumberg?
Oh, yeah, here.
Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Commissioner Chapman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Halsegger?
Here.
All present, the mayor is absent tonight.
Okay, our next thing on our agenda is an introduction of our new city treasurer/assistant finance director, Chris Whitmer.
Commissioners, it's my pleasure to be able to introduce to you our new assistant finance director/city treasurer, Chris Whitmer. She comes to us from Isabella County, where she worked for several years in their accounting department. Prior to that, she has several years of experience in private accounting practice. She's had her own accounting business for quite a while, so very broad skill set, very experienced, and we're very happy and pleased to have her on board. I want to say thank you to Marianne Kornexel, who, this is her last city commission meeting, and just say thank you for everything you've given to the city over the years. Kristen, anything you'd like to say?
It's a pleasure being here, and it's nice to see you all. I look forward to growing with the city. Marianne, I wish I could get a year with you to get more out of your head. I can already tell that you've served the city well, so it's going to be some tough shoes to fill. Thank you.
Well, welcome. Next, we have a proclamation, and this is okay from up here? Okay, all right. This is a proclamation recognizing Juneteenth. Whereas Juneteenth, or Juneteenth Independence Day, commemorates the traditional observance of the end of slavery in the United States and is observed annually on June 19. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1, 1863, declaring the slaves in Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America, and whereas more than two years would pass before the news reached Texas, when on June 19, 1865, Union Major General Gordon Granger and his regiment arrived in Galveston and spread the word that slavery had been abolished. And whereas the following year, the first official Juneteenth celebrations took place in Texas and have continued across the United States throughout the years. And whereas June 19 has a special meaning and is called Juneteenth, combining the words "June" and "19th," and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. And whereas the city of Mount Pleasant supports our nation's Declaration of Independence, which provides that all men are created equal, and acknowledges that we should celebrate and enjoy liberty and justice for every citizen. Now therefore, I, Mary Halsegger, Vice Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2023, as Juneteenth Celebration Day in Mount Pleasant, and further resolve to support the education and informational outreach by Central Michigan University on June 19 to involve our larger community in this celebration. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand in the great seal of the state of Mount Pleasant, the city of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, on this 12th day of June, 2023. Okay, the next thing is if the commissioners have any additions or deletions to the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll open our public input on agenda items. And if you wish to bring forward something you would like to talk about that is on the agenda, please come forward. You will be asked to state your name and address, and will be given five minutes to speak. If there's anyone from the audience, this would be an appropriate time to come forward. And do we have anyone on Zoom or by phone?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So in that case, we will close the public hearing. And the next thing on the agenda is the receipt of petitions and communications. Mayor, manager of sense.
Received petitions and communications this evening includes: monthly report on police-related citizen complaints received, resignation of Easton Hamill from the Parks and Recreation Commission, term to expire December 31, 2024, minutes of the Traffic Control Commission from March, minutes of the Airport Joint Operations and Management Board, April, and minutes of the Planning Commission from May.
Right, thank you. And next on our agenda are items on the consent agenda. And commissioners, is there anything on the consent agenda that you wish to be put on the regular agenda? Okay, manager of sense.
Consent items this evening includes: approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held May 22, 2023, consider approval of the proposed 2024-2029 capital improvement plan, consider resolution extending conditional approval of a Class A adult-use marijuana grower and adult-use marijuana retailer for Rio's Happy Tree LLC at 1012 North Lansing Street, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
Okay, and do I have a motion to accept these consent items?
I move to accept the consent items, but the agenda as indicated.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Well, we're already to page two. We're doing well.
Doing a good job.
All right, under new business, we have a discussion about something that I know some of us have had minor discussions about, about city information and perhaps an engagement booth at the Mount Pleasant Farmer's Market. And Mayor, manager of sense, do you want to tee that up a little bit?
Yeah, I can just say, as part of the agenda-setting committee, the request had come in from another city commissioner who was very interested in this, that would be Commissioner Wingard. So I might even just turn it over to Commissioner Wingard, if that's okay, just to talk about what the idea is here.
Yeah, so that's good. Just wanted to have a formal discussion, just kind of with the rest of the commission, on the idea of, again, it's been a conversation for a couple of us of having a booth at the farmer's market, either Thursday or Saturday, probably both, I think, would be preferable to just, again, provide city-related information to residents and anyone who's attending the market. One thing that I'd kind of be interested in doing along with that, and reason I'm kind of pushing for discussion with the commissioners, is I think it'd be really great if we could come up with some kind of schedule where ourselves as commissioners could be present to just engage with residents at the market. It'd be, one of the biggest questions I had campaigning for city commission was, well, what does the city commission do? And so I think anything we can do to get out there and better engage with people and educate them on city government would be helpful, and I think it'd be good for us to do as well. But again, it'd be something where we can't, we're not employees necessarily, so we can't like require ourselves to go and log hours at the market. So just wanting to discuss, see what kind of people might be interested in, and kind of go from there. Any thoughts?
I think it's a good idea, I think, I mean, but I think practically Thursdays is a workday.
Yeah.
Saturdays in Michigan is summer.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I don't, I don't think I could be involved with that.
Well, I think the big thing is we would avoid quorum, so that we would probably, I can't, we would probably want to work out a schedule where there's no more than two of us, I can't imagine, at one of these things, or maybe one even, but going along with that, again, just kind of like trying to get more interest in even some of the other boards and committees that we have at the city, I think it might be good to invite even people who aren't on the city commission, but like Planning Commission, other committees that are looking to gain membership or gain attendance, to come and like have a day at the city booth and everything. But again, it'd become back into like our leadership of what we'd be willing to do, so.
Commissioner Bush?
I really did like this idea. I think I brought it up early on in my time in the commission, and definitely not as formally as you're prepared to do, but I did, I got feedback in terms of, well, that's a workday, inconsistency, and da-da-da-da. And so perhaps we could, like, look at something like not reinventing the wheel, and there already is a Parks and Recreation element at the farmer's market. Obviously, it's organized by Parks and Recreation, and Carol Moody, I mean, already has her hands full, but perhaps we could develop a fact sheet in regards to, maybe, you know, with like QR codes or whatnot that takes you to, you know, this page of the city website, or, you know, this information on signing up for emergency alerts, and just do, 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 do. And then also, maybe, I'll link to the commissioners' emails and what sort of things, so it'd kind of just make it really easy to, and if we can staff and add, like, put somebody at the table, but instead of like risking having an empty table, maybe just have an invitation for an open seat at a table that already exists, and we can invite not only commissioners, but as you mentioned, members of other boards and whatnot. And so even if you, if you, if you couldn't commit to, I mean, I could commit to a couple hours, I mean, because I don't have to be to work until like 10, so like, but it could be more like an open seat that might rotate, but with a consistent list of these resources that people could access, something like that, maybe, is what I was thinking.
Commissioner Ecke?
I like the idea. I, I don't think that you two are the only ones who have thought about it, or at least discussed it. I think a number of us have discussed the possibility of not necessarily having, not necessarily having a table at the farmer's market, but how we can engage in outreach to the community. I see this as part of outreach to the community. And Commissioner Bush is correct, there is already an arm of the city that is there, which is Parks and Recreation. There's no reason why we cannot collaborate with them to disseminate more information about the city. The problem for me is that Thursday is not negotiable, it's, I'm out. I'm a full-time faculty, I teach Tuesdays and Thursdays, I can't even go there to buy vegetable on Thursday, so I am completely out. Saturday, a possibility, but I'm also engaged in a number of events, activities, organizational activities on Saturday, so, you know, requiring, and, you know, if I went, I would be there, I would be the first person there. But since it is voluntary, perhaps one of the things to do then is to say, you know, as we're saying, we're collaborating with Parks and Recreation, there are other organizations or other departments or commissions of the city, they can also be there. And any commissioner who is available, or who is present, or who can make it, can, you know, should go, or can't go there and visit the booth to meet people. I would like, you know, us to be at least that open, because I don't want to feel guilty that I'm not, you know, uh, uh, you know, fulfilling my obligation by saying I'm going to do it. I know what my schedule is like, and I want to do it, but I want to promise you that I can't do it, because I have obligations to students. I'm not going to leave them on Thursday to be there. Saturdays, I also have obligations to some students and some other organizations, and to the city. So, and there's only one of me, anyway. So, so, yeah, I think making it, you know, you know, making it a little bit more voluntary, you know? So if we are there, if we're there on Saturday morning, then we, you know, by all means, go sit down and chat and meet, you know, the, the community. But if we're not there, let's create that, you know, uh, you know, infographic, that's what I'm looking for. And we talked about something like that last time in one of our conversations, that we create infographic that has, you know, this, you know, information sheet, it's like half of this, you know, that with all the information, you know, and we can just leave it with Parks and Recreation, you know, for dissemination, and people can pick up that information, you know?
What I've heard so far is that there would be a little more support for Saturdays than Thursdays. Any other thoughts I've missed?
I feel like Commissioner Ecke and I are both kind of speaking to a similar idea in terms of having a resource to allow for some consistency, and whether or not it's something that you can hand to a community member, or, I mean, I personally like the paperless version of something that somebody could snap real quick and, and, and get links. That was my suggestion for the, for people signing up for the emergency information. Yeah, during the, when everybody didn't know about it during the water, boil water advisory. So I just think you can reach a lot of people quickly there, and I think that the Parks and Recreation booth, people are aware that it's there, and they often have engagement with, like, tasty food, but they don't really have a lot of, they don't really have engagement as to how the farmer's market even really gets there, which is a huge asset of our community. And so people already love that part of our community, and let's give them more about what our community has to offer, like, by like tying into that table. And, and I think, I don't want to ask more of Carol Moody and the Parks and Recreation Department, but I do think that we could, like, leave an empty seat, just have a little infographic, and, and perhaps then go from there in terms of encouraging not only commissioners, but also, you know, other representatives. Now, that would be, I guess, the one issue you would have with that is that, is there any restrictions on who we would let be involved in that? We don't want necessarily just somebody who doesn't necessarily have a, I don't know where I'm going with this.
But anyway, I'll just tap in, I just wanted to say, to Marine, just to your point, Marine, I just want to say, yeah, I agree that, like, time constraints are a huge thing. I think Thursdays were mentioned, I think, when I had a chat with Liz about it, just because weekends are her busy time, and I wanted to have this discussion, like, at the committee meeting, because I could talk with all of you at the same time, rather than having several different conversations. But, yeah, I think definitely if we could put out the availability, I guess, kind of as a bit of a compromise of like, opening that up to like, again, like, I think about, like, committees and boards that are lacking for membership, or lacking for representation and everything, because I know we have a number of committees that are needing, needing people to volunteer. If we could, like, give them the opportunity to, like, sit in and, like, talk about what they do, and talk about their work and everything, that would also, but again, voluntary is the idea here, and so it's looking for, what can we do voluntarily?
Yeah. What are the hours for the Saturday farmer's market? It's a little bit shorter times.
Saturday is from 9 to 2 PM.
2 PM, I think.
Okay, Commissioner Ecke?
Yeah, I, you know, I also want to caution that, you know, if this is going to be not collaborative with Park, Parks and Recreation, we consult them first, instead of going there and just sort of saying, you do this. I, I want to be careful about that, you know, about, yes, so, you know, let's consult them, are they, you know, open to that? And one of the questions I had here for myself was, who is going to, and if Parks and Recs, you know, says, you know, well, we can't really do this, then who monitors this particular table? That's a problem. Are we going to ask city staff to do this? Because that's also asking them to commit hours outside, you know, their, their, their work hours. I don't know that I would be comfortable doing that. You know, if it is voluntary, it's voluntary. Let's see if Parks and Recs, you know, would work with us, probably explore that, you know, before we move forward with it.
Commissioner Bush?
I was going to kind of make that thought, but also tie into, one of the potential concerns we should look for is in terms of monitoring that table. That's, that's the point I was trying to get to earlier. And we wouldn't want to risk anything becoming in any way partisan. Obviously, the city commission is a nonpartisan commission, but some of our elected officials are not nonpartisan, and so we would need to make sure that, that we were all the way operating under a informative platform and not under a partisan platform. But I agree, I think what I would like to ask of city staff, and if this is in agreement, like, is to, let's, can we approach the Parks and Rec Commission and see if they'd be open to a level of collaboration? And then I think we'll know more about what options we have available to us. Is that fair, or?
Yeah. Like, only thing on the agenda right now is just a discussion, so if that's where the discussion's going, I'm, I'm happy with that and everything, but I just wanted to kind of get the ball rolling, so I think that's a great idea.
That's where I would go first. I mean, you know, collaboration.
Any other voices that want to be heard? Okay. You feel like you have some direction from us?
I think so. If I can just kind of read through some of the notes that I have here, we're talking about a few different things, but ultimately, presence at the farmer's market, there's some popularity in being able to attend Saturdays more than likely than Thursdays, but we could potentially leave this as more of an open seat for the city commission members or members of various committees to attend, talk about what they do, engage with the public, et cetera. Talk about a fact sheet, or some sort of a sheet with maybe QR codes that leads to different signup information, for instance, such as the emergency signup notifications, maybe links to blogs, social media, newsletters, events, et cetera, more information out there that people will be able to access pretty readily. A few things here, we talked about, asking for the availability of various committee members to volunteer and to take part in this as well, too, and I know we can do that outreach, and then there's also the collaboration with the Parks and Recreation Commission and the department, and making sure that we have capacity for this. So my takeaway is to have this conversation with the city staff, then to reconnect with the city commission on this, talk about what some of our options are.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, very good, very good. All right, next on our agenda is announcements from commissioners or staff about city-related issues and new business. Commissioner Ecke?
There is Juneteenth Celebration Program at CMU on June 19. You heard the proclamation, so it is open to the public, and CMU celebrates Juneteenth. There will be discussion, a panel discussion, and since the city has also proclaimed Juneteenth, you know, a recognized, you know, holiday, we hope that people can come, attend, and, you know, have an understanding of what Juneteenth means.
And Commissioner Bush?
I am looking at the exact deadline date right now, and I, yep, there it is, okay. We have a, a open position on the Mount Pleasant Public Schools School Board, and there is an open position for Dana Hawkins leaving the Mount Pleasant Public Schools School Board, and so they're looking for nominations, and I lied, I didn't find the exact date. I, I know it's like this week.
It's soon.
It's soon, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know of the exact date, but I know it was published in the Morning Sun recently, and so if you're interested in serving a position that would end December 2024, I believe, so it'd be a year and a half on the Mount Pleasant School Board.
Anyone else? All right, Marianne.
If I may, for the city clerk, she asked me to mention that the commission packets are now available in the city clerk's office for the November election, for the two terms expiring on December 31, 2023. The election is November 7, and the term runs from January 1, 2024, through December 31, 2026. Petitions are being accepted from Monday, January, January, June 26 through Tuesday, July 25 at 4 PM. Petitions must contain no less than 50 and no more than 80 signatures, and these are for the terms expiring from Commissioners Chapman and Asman. And then lastly, I'd like to say that it's been my pleasure and my honor to serve the city for the last three decades as the city treasurer, and I want to thank this commission and previous commissioners for allowing me this opportunity to serve. Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is our second public comment time, and this is on agenda and non-agenda items. So if you wish to come forward, you would be asked to state your name and your address, and be given five minutes to speak. And if there's anyone from the chambers here, we kind of give you first dibs. And then we can ask if there's anyone on Zoom or by phone.
No hands up in Zoom, and no comments here.
Okay, all right, thank you. That ends our regular agenda for tonight, and we do have a work session. Can I suggest, since it's been such a quick meeting, that we go right into the work session?
Yes.
Is that all right?
Yes.
All right, so this is a discussion about owner-occupied residential incentive program.
All right. So as part of the city commission's goals related to housing, staff is going to present information, a previous housing program that was implemented by the city of Mount Pleasant in previous years. So the program was designed to incentivize new homeowners to purchase homes previously licensed as rental housing. The program provided up to $10,000 to qualifying homeowners to purchase said properties. Staff's going to discuss the outcomes of the program and discuss some possible alternatives to encourage home ownership. and discuss some possible alternatives to encourage home ownership. Just want to remind the city commission, this is kind of the third part of the discussions that we had related or had planned related to affordable housing. We had started with our pilot or payment in lieu of taxes program. We had talked about N. E. Zs at a previous work session as well, too. And so this would be the third of the objectives that we had set out to address affordable housing within the city. And that is encouraging the conversion of the rental properties into homeowner-occupied. So with that, I am going to turn it over to our Director of Planning and Community Development, Anuela Povidego.
Thank you, Erin. So good evening, Commissioners. So here's the slide, just to kind of give you an overview about the housing goal. So this slide provides you with the three main housing tactics that the city commission had discussed for 2023. As a reminder, the main goal is to address the housing market demands in our community, including homeownership opportunities. Tech three focuses on the implementation of incentives to stimulate the conversion of rental housing to owner-occupied housing. So we talked about N. E. Zs, and now the Community Services Department would like to bring back the topic of potentially bringing back the updated version of the owner-occupied residential incentive program, which the idea would be to focus mostly on the conversion of non-conforming residential rental housing, basically rooming dwellings, into single-family dwellings. So that was the idea that was thrown in the, in the past on how to update the program to be more tailored to that part. So in, just to give you an overview of all the program, in 2007, the city commission has had allocated $100,000 to help increase the amount of owner-occupied housing in the city. The commission formally announced the program in 2008, and the goal was to create an incentive for city residents to purchase existing rental homes and convert them to single-family owner-occupied homes within the central neighborhood, which you can see here, the boundaries of the program. And the idea was that this area had an even lower rate of owner-occupied housing. So due to the city, to the funding limitation, only properties within the target areas were eligible. And the program was based on a first-come, first-served situation. So in terms of the amounts, single-family rental licenses, they could get 5% of the purchase price, up to $10,000 per applicant, that converted that to owner-occupied, uh, single-family homes. And rooming and boarding dwellings, they would get a slightly higher, higher amount, so 8% of the purchase price, not exceed 16,000 per applicant. And it is very important to note here that the rental license had to be given up for five years. So that means that after that, it could be converted back to rentals. So in those seven or eight years that the program ran here in the city of Mount Pleasant, we only had 14 home buyers to take, that took advantage of it in the central neighborhood. Two of those were rooming dwellings, and most of them were single-family homes. The city spent over $68,000 of the $100,000 program fund. But as you can see, we did not even finish, you know, spending the entire amount for so many years. So I look back into previous documents that we had from previous staff and staff analysis at the time. So in 2016, the staff did write a memo to the city commission providing this information, that their assessment was that the program was not very successful. And the main issue was that when they analyzed the overall ratio of owner-occupied to rent-occupied housing, the overall numbers did not change much. So even though we were able to convert those 14 homes, if you look at the overall, overall number in the community, it was basically the same. Also, staff noted that most properties would have been purchased with or without incentive dollars. So it was like someone was already buying a home, and here is all this money, you know, that it could get for doing that. So it was somewhat a waste of public funds to the staff knowledge at that time. So that's why the program was put on pause at the time. And then I would also say that after thinking about, you know, why we only had 14 within that period of time, the idea was that the amount of dollars that were offered was not enough. So to be more successful and actually flip decisions, you know, from residents, the idea would that the, the amount would have to be increased. And the consultant had mentioned roughly around $25,000 as opposed to $10,000 in order to get the incentive in a better spot. So that would require more money as well. And then, as previously noted, after five years, properties could be converted back. So I did take a look at the properties that got the, the, the money at the time. And I did see from the ones that I could find information on our database, 411 Pine had become again a rental in 2022. So we can see that in over time, so many of them were just finishing the five-year period around 2022. So moving forward, we may see more of those converting back to rentals. So then, now I kind of just wanted to turn to data a little bit and give you the slide back, which I presented some of this data in the N. E. Z. presentation. I think that it's important to recall that I don't think that Mount Pleasant really has an issue with owner occupancy rates. When we look at the number of properties that are owned and occupied by property owners as opposed to rentals, we have over 70% of the properties being owner-occupied. And I think that's such a better depiction of the owner occupancy ratio because we have more units that are located in apartment complexes than in single-family homes. And so considering that most apartment complexes are targeted to students, it makes sense that they will be renting and not buying. So I think that that's a better depiction of our rates. I did want to give you more information on how we compare to other cities because that's one of the main questions that you asked me when we were having the N. E. Z. conversation. So here, as you can see, is a slide that compares Mount Pleasant to other similar cities that also have high student populations. And the chart, the blue chart, shows you the amount of the population amounts in those cities. And then the red line shows you the owner occupancy ratio by unit. So unfortunately, census data does not have that 70%, which is based on lots. We only have access to owner versus rent-occupied units. And this is what you see here in the slide. So I would note that Mount Pleasant has a 38% rate when you look at the unit. And then we have a city of Ypsilne with a similar rate, slightly lower, and Big Rapids with a similar rate. And then we're looking at Marquette, Halton, and Suzanne Marie. Those cities have a higher rate of owner-occupied housing units. However, when looking at density, we noted that those cities are much less dense than Mount Pleasant, which I believe it's a depiction on the fact that they don't have as many apartment complexes as we have here, and student housing occurs in a different type of building. And so with that, I believe that it kind of demonstrates why the numbers are slightly higher for them as opposed to us. So looking back at Mount Pleasant a little bit, I just want to touch upon the point and the idea that got thrown in the, in the past that we could tailor the program more to the conversion of non-conforming rooming dwellings into conforming single-family homes that are owner-occupied. Here you can see, uh, the pie chart on your left shows all the rental units that we have and the different types of buildings. So we have 14% of rooming properties in the city. Within that, 35% of those rooming dwellings are located in areas where they cannot be built today. So that's what, that's what non-conforming means here. And this is because of previous goals that we had, and we amended the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance a couple of times to decrease the amount of areas in the city that rooming dwellings can be built in order to push students more towards C. M. U. And, and so that's the only area where we allow rooming dwellings today. And that basically created a non-conformance situation in the rooming dwellings that were built in the past in neighborhoods elsewhere. So we have around 100 room, uh, rooming dwellings that are non-conforming in the rest, in the other parts of the city that are not close to C. M. U. So I guess this is a slide that talks about what we could benefit off if we focus the program more to rooming dwelling conversions. So the first point would be here would be to increase zoning compliance. So we would be eliminating those non-conformances. And then I think with that, we'll be better able to match the current housing needs to what, what we know that, you know, the types of housing that we know people need. So we have a lot of student housing, we have an overabundance of them. So if we are converting rooming dwellings to single-family dwellings, we are creating more space for families. So that could be another gain. And then benefits would be long-term. As those rooming dwellings once converted to single-family dwellings, they will not be able to be converted back after five years. So that issue would not exist here in this situation. However, if we think about the amount of money that we need to offer to make the program successful, so around $25,000, with $100,000, you're looking at four properties, you know, maybe five, if those purchase prices are not as great. So the impact is really minimal, four out of 100 that we have out there. And then in conversations with the city manager and others at the staff level, we think that with the lack of resources that we have, it really wouldn't be a good idea, I think, to bring this program back and spend public funds in that way. So I would also mention that there are programs out there at the state level that offer assistance for home buyers. So this one is the down payment program that got expanded to be available statewide and increased the amount from $7,500 to $10,000 for low-income households that qualify for, for the program. So I think there are other efforts out there that is trying to get to the same result in increasing owner occupancy, owner-occupied housing. So yeah, that concludes the presentation and just ending with the question, does the city commission support the staff recommendation to not pursue the owner-occupied residential incentive program? And I hope into discussion.
Any thoughts?
I definitely support that, you know, based on all the data that you had given. To me, it doesn't make sense.
Especially if the idea supports affordable housing and people who are taking advantage of the program were going to buy a house anyway. It's nice to be able to help them, but. Question for you, do you know, so the information on like the Mishna grants that we were, you mentioned just a moment ago? I've never bought a home before. Does the city have information available to like people looking to buy in the area? Do we have like programs or any information that promotes like these up like statewide or anything else like that?
We don't.
That's, that's where that infographic would be useful. You know, where do you find resources like this? I think this keeps coming up in terms of where residents can find useful resources or information for resources available to them. And, you know, we should do that or at least create a link, a page on our website, the city's website, that says, here is, you know, information. If you're looking for this, if you're looking for this, if you're looking for this, you know, that's that tab, they can go there and it would direct them then to all of this. You know, I, I actually had a question, but you can go ahead and I.
I think we, I, I've met multiple times with the regional director for 211. And if you talk to 211, they are very adamantly opposed to any kind of resource guides that other people have. Because what happens is, is, is you make this infograph and or this long, big old packet, somebody changes their number, somebody changes their hours. The only people that update it all the time is 211. That's it. And so, because that's what 211 does.
Then point them to 211.
Exactly, so that's, that's what I'm saying. I think that's, I think that's a huge, because there's, but I'll tell you what, I work with many, many different organizations, and everybody wants to have what we've talked about, this kind of resource guide that says, but then anytime they close up shop, anytime they change leadership, the information does not change. Now all we're doing is giving them bad information. And so I agree, we need that. But I think we really need to use 211 and say, because, I mean, I, as, as the executive director of an organization, I get those updates weekly. And if I don't submit updated information, they continually remind me until I do.
Commissioner Bush.
Well, just that I think that we're still safe representing, I think, resources for the city of Mount Pleasant specifically. And do we get calls from 211, like asking for?
Well, I'm specifically talking about like housing resources, right? How, especially the Mishna, if you call 211, they'll send you to the MSU extension. They'll say, hey, we have these resources that'll teach you home buying, that'll teach you Mishna grants, the USDA grants, that kind of thing.
No, no, I, I agree with that, Ellen, I just want to make sure that we.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
And then, and then that being said, yeah, I mean, maybe I should browse 211, I don't know, like.
It's very helpful.
Well, yeah, city of Mount Pleasant stuff on there, too, I guess, I don't know.
Commissioner Eke.
I, I use 211, and the reason why I say this is because I have worked with people. I talked to you a while ago, Commissioner.
You just called me Brian.
I'm, I'm getting stuck, Brian, Brian, you know, Topman, right? You know, I, yeah, I'm getting, yeah, Brian here and Brian there, I'm just getting stuck. I'm sorry. But, you know, so my colleague, Brian, at the other end, you know, I talked to you a while ago because I was, you know, addressing a situation where somebody needed information for housing. Right? So residents need that kind of information. Where do they go? They don't know. The city provides on its website this link to 211. They wouldn't know, not everybody knows to go to 211. You know that, our city can provide that. It's just making the lives of our residents less complicated in terms of where they can gain access to information that they need. I'm not saying take over, but I'm saying make it, you know, you know, we navigate that for them, right? You are saying Mishna is available. Do they know that they should go contact Mishna? How many of them know that, right? So we say, instead of this program, here is information, you're looking for housing. Again, you know, we serve as a safe space for them to go to, to access information, you know, that would take them to other places where they will get all of that detail. I am not saying that we take over the responsibilities of those organizations, but we provide them that opportunity, that link to the other organizations. I was, my question actually basically had to do with the, how you're calculating the percentage of the student, you know, housing in relation to, because I was getting lost in terms of, you know, you talked about apartment. Yeah, you talked about apartments, and then you talked about non-conforming, you know. So I'm getting stuck there. So could you just clarify that for me a little bit so that?
Yeah, so I just, maybe I want to step back and just talk about rooming dwellings for a minute. So rooming dwellings are type, basically, they look like a single-family residence, but they have so many bedrooms and just one kitchen and maybe one or two bathrooms. And here in Mount Pleasant, rooming dwellings basically mean student housing just because the most common type of renters that occupy rooming dwellings are students. Not, it's not necessarily a one-on-one situation. In other communities, rooming dwellings may be used for just individuals, you know, that are sharing a home, especially in very high-density areas. But here, it basically means student housing. So we have this typology that has a lot of students living in them. And then we also have the apartment complexes that are spread across the city. Many of them and most of them do target student populations. And as you know, so many of those apartment complexes have really high rates of vacancy that they are not filling out with other types of tenants because they still want to target student populations. So my understanding is that, you know, from past history here with students throwing parties elsewhere in the city, the city decided to narrow down the area where we would want students to live. And the one tool that we had to do that was to change the zoning ordinance to limit rooming dwellings onto those locations. So, yeah, so when I'm talking about student housing, it's basically those two typologies.
Okay, that makes sense now because I was really getting a bit confused, you know. All right, that helps. Thank you.
I support the dissolution of the owner-occupied residential incentive program.
Yeah, I support the staff recommendation, too. It's, it's not economically feasible, it's not, you know, the conversion after five years, we lose. If it were simply permanent, you know, I might say go for it. But, you know, if they, if it's going to revert after five years, it just simply doesn't make economic sense.
And, yeah, in terms of the information sharing, I think it's a great idea. Just wanted to note that the economic development page does have incentives and links to programs from the state or other. uh, from the state or, or otherwise. We do have several links, but it's mostly targeted for big developments, so commercial, industrial. So I do think there is a, a hole there that we need to fill for.
For residents.
For residents, yeah. So I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you also.
Thank, thank you, Manuela. All right. Motion to adjourn?
I'm.